Welcome to the Twinsburg Board of Education meeting, regular meeting Wednesday, November 6th, 2024. It is 4:00 PM. Mrs. Rosenaya, would you please call us to roll? Call us to order, please.
I see Mrs. Davis, Mrs. Egan.
Here.
Mrs. Hamilton.
Here.
Mrs. Crawford.
Here.
Mrs. Travis.
Here. Now, present minus Mrs. Davis, if you would please stand and join with me when you can.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Ladies, we need a motion. There is addendum to the agenda under item J, number 16 and 17. Can I have a motion, please, please? So moved by Mrs. Crawford.
Second.
Second by Mrs. Egan. Roll, Mrs. Rosenaya.
Mrs. Crawford?
Yes.
Mrs. Egan?
Yes.
Mrs. Hamilton?
Yes.
Mrs. Travis?
Yes. And then it's four oh. Okay, and again, good afternoon and welcome to today's Twinsburg State School District's Wednesday, November 6th, 2024 Board of Education meeting. My name is Leah Travis. An honor to serve you in the capacity of Board President. First, for the purpose of future review, we did move today's meeting to 4:00 PM. And that is so that we can also attend and cheer on our boys soccer team, which is where Mrs. Davis is currently going, as they play in the state semifinals tonight at 7:00 PM. We are definitely sending our good luck wishes for another victory. As you probably already know, the Tiger Legacy bond issue did not pass last night. The results, as of today, have us short by 457 votes. Needless to say, we are disappointed. Our elementary buildings are aging buildings and will continue to have ongoing issues. As a board, we know that work will be done as needed, but we also know that costs continue to rise and our permanent improvement funds will not be able to handle the many future needs. We, along with the school administration, will continue to provide the best environment that we can for our students, and this board will work diligently to plan next steps. Today, we must offer our thanks. Let me start with the district's Blue Ribbon Committee members. This committee is made up of residents who have worked tirelessly over the past months in support of the Tiger Legacy project. They are individuals who are truly believers in the Twinsburg schools and the communities within our district where they reside. Personally, as I have grown to know these individuals, I am very impressed by their level of commitment and selfless drive in support for our students with a close eye to what will be needed in the future. They want only what is best for our district, our students, and the communities that they live in. And we tonight thank each of you for all the time and effort that you have selflessly given. We thank our superintendent, Mrs. Powers, business manager, Mr. Strickland, HR director, Mr. Sedlak, and treasurer, Mrs. Rosenaya. And while we thank many other members of our administration and staff who helped with this project in various ways, these four have given much. Beyond their normal workday, they have shared facts about the project, often out in the community three or four nights a week for the past several weeks. We thank you for your willingness to answer questions and to meet with residents upon their request. Your efforts do not go unnoticed. And finally, we thank those residents who did vote in support of the Tiger Legacy project. And we assure you that we, your Board of Education, will move forward in planning the next steps. This concludes my announcements for tonight. I'll turn it over to you, Mrs. Powers.
Thank you, Mrs. Travis. Good evening, Board of Education. Good evening, community. This is an exciting day here in our community with our Tiger soccer team on their way right now to play in the Division III state semifinal game versus the Columbus State Francis De Sales Stallions. So we wish our boys the best of luck. We congratulate Coach Lally on his 300-plus win this season and Coach Betson and Coach Sutcliffe and Coach Pritchlow. So thanks for leading on the boys, and we look forward to some great results this evening and fingers crossed for the rest of the weekend because if the boys win tonight, they will be playing Sunday afternoon at the Columbus Crew Stadium for the state championship game. So we are super excited for our young men and look forward to all the excitement of this evening's game, too. As Mrs. Travis indicated, we are very disappointed about last night's results. This was a tough loss, lots and lots of energy associated with this bond campaign. And I also echo Mrs. Travis's thanks to the Blue Ribbon Schools Committee. What a great group of individuals. We are indebted to all that you have done for our school district for this campaign and those in the past. A board without the funding to move forward with the new construction, our district now faces continued challenges associated with aging facilities and rising maintenance costs. Our immediate focus will remain on essential repairs to maintain safe and functional environments, especially in our elementary school buildings and at the athletic facilities. While this outcome is challenging and a disappointment, our commitment is serving our students, and that is our priority. And we'll continue to keep everyone informed as the Board of Education makes some decisions with regard to the next steps for the Tiger Legacy project. A Board of Education, as you know, all of the Students of the Month celebrations previously planned for tonight for Samuel Bissell Elementary School and RB Chamberlain Middle School are being postponed until November 20th. It is going to be one heck of a celebration on November 20th with all five of our schools bringing students to celebrate. And we are going to ask Mr. Fantone to bring our fall sports athletes as well. So hang on tight. That's going to be a long meeting, but a great one nonetheless. And that will be actually held across the street in the auditorium because although we love the facility here at the government center, we cannot fit all of those students and all the parents in one space for such a grand celebration. So that, as well as our strategic plan update for quarter one, the second part of that will be at the November 20th Board Meeting. And again, we appreciate our parents from RBC and Bissell understanding the need to postpone your children's celebrations. Really, we just want to make sure that there's time allotted for Board of Education members and other members of the staff to travel safely to Belleville tonight. And so we thank you for allowing us to do that, and we look forward to celebrating with our Bissell/RBC families as well as Twinsburg High School, Wilcox Primary, and Dodge, all on November 20th. So looking forward to a grand celebration. A Board of Education, this evening, you'll hear a very brief report from me about the proposed academic calendar for the 25-26 school year. We know that our families and our staff members rely on the district releasing this information as soon as possible. And so it's important that we get to that important business this evening. And that concludes my report for today.
Thank you, Mrs. Powers. Committee reports? Okay, hearing none. Mrs. Powers, we'll try back over to you for the calendar report.
Okay. Board, you have a copy of the powerpoint in your packet, although it really doesn't say much. My narrative says more than that. Just to give the community a little bit of background with how this comes to be. So in the master agreement with the Twinsburg Education Association, the Twinsburg Education Association's Labor Management Relations Committee actually works together with district administrators to create three templates that are then provided to the staff for their consideration. So that happened within the last week or two. And this evening, after getting feedback from the staff per the contract, I'm going to present to you the calendar that we're going to propose for the 25-26 school year. Per statute, public school district Board of Education must hold a public hearing at least 30 days prior to adopting a school calendar. Tonight's agenda provides this opportunity and ample time for members of the community to provide feedback before the Board of Education will take action regarding the calendar, and that will not happen until your December 11th Board Meeting. The calendar that you will review this evening was developed, again, in collaboration with the Twinsburg Education Association and is supported by a large number of our staff members. I'd like to highlight some of the areas of interest on this proposed calendar. To begin, you'll note that there are three soft reopening days on August 18th, 19th, and 20th. Please note that students in preschool through grade six will have soft reopening days for all three of those days noted. However, RB Chamberlain Middle School students will only have soft reopening days on August 18th and 19th, and all middle school students will report on August 20th. At Twinsburg High School, only the ninth grade students will report on August 18th. All Twinsburg High School students in grades nine through 12 will then report on August 19th and 20th. That's very similar to this year's calendar in form. All students in grades preschool through 12 will begin school officially then on Thursday, August 21st. Friday, August 29th is a day-to-day, and students will not have school on the 29th. Students would not have school on Tuesday, September 23rd, or on Thursday, October 2nd, as those dates would be curriculum day-to-days. The 23rd is also Rosh Hashanah, and the 2nd is Yom Kippur, which will provide an opportunity for our families of the Jewish faith to celebrate the holiday with their children. Students would also not have school on Monday, October 20th, as that is also going to be a curriculum day-to-day. The 20th is also Diwali, which is a significant cultural and religious holiday celebrated particularly in the Southeastern, South Asian communities here in our school district as well. And this day away from school would allow our families to celebrate this important holiday together. In order for the school year to begin a little later in August, this proposed calendar has a shorter Thanksgiving break than what we will have this year. For the 25-26 school year, the Thanksgiving break will be from Wednesday, November 26th through Friday, November 28th. Winter break will begin on Monday, December 22nd, and school will resume for everybody on Monday, January 5th. Historically, a long weekend is planned for the President's Day weekend. However, on this particular calendar, both Monday, February 9th and Monday, February 16th would be days off from school. And 16th, of course, is President's Day weekend. This recommendation actually comes from our high school staff members who are concerned about the impact on the blue and white schedule of classes when students are away from classes on both a Monday and a Friday connected to the same weekend. Friday, March 20th is a day-to-day, and our students will not have school. The 20th is also Eid al-Fitr, which is an important holiday for our Tigers of the Muslim faith. No school for students on the 20th means that our families of the Muslim faith are able to celebrate that holiday with their families. Spring break would be scheduled from Monday, March 30th through Monday, April 5th, and then school will resume on Tuesday, April 6th, having Easter Monday off on this calendar. And then the last day of school would be Thursday, May 28th for students and Friday, May 29th for the staff. Again, the academic calendar will appear on the agenda for the December 11th Board of Education meeting. We will post this proposed calendar on the district website, and members of our community who would like to offer feedback should contact me at the office or send an email to me with their thoughts. I'll also push this out in the weekly Sunday update so families are aware of the proposed calendar and also of their opportunity to provide feedback should they desire to do so. Any questions, Board?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks. Okay, please, Mary Ford. Thank you very much, Mrs. Powers. We're monstrous. We have no one, so we're going to move forward without objection. I will read these together. Items H1, resolve that the Twinsburg Board of Education approves the following meeting minutes. That would be the regular meetings of October 9th, 2024, and October 23rd, 2024, as sent to the Board under separate cover. Two, resolve that the Twinsburg Board of Education accepts the following financial reports for the month of September, 2024: bank reconciliation, cash summary report by fund, cash summary report by fund and special cost center, dispersment summary report, and investments portfolio review, as sent to the Board under separate cover. And three, resolve that the Twinsburg Board of Education approves all expenditures for the month of September, 2024, as reflected in the above-named reports. May I have a motion, please, for items one through three?
So moved.
So moved by Mrs. Egan.
Second.
Second by Mrs. Hamilton. Discussion? Hearing none. Mrs. Rosenaya.
Mrs. Egan?
Yes.
Mrs. Hamilton?
Yes.
Mrs. Crawford?
Yes.
Mrs. Travis?
Yes. Motion carries four oh, with one abstention or one absence. Item I, items I number one, resolve that the Twinsburg Board of Education accepts the certificated licensed personnel and/or contract recommendations detailed in the attached exhibit as per the dates, terms, and other applicable conditions specified pending satisfactory ORC background checks. Two, resolve that the Twinsburg Board of Education accepts the classified personnel and/or contract recommendations detailed in the attached exhibit as per the dates, terms, and other applicable conditions specified pending satisfactory ORC background checks. And three, resolve that the Twinsburg Board of Education accepts the supplemental contract recommendations detailed in the attached exhibit as per the dates, terms, and other applicable conditions specified pending satisfactory ORC background checks. May I have a motion for items one through three, please?
So moved.
Okay, I'll give back to Mrs. Crawford for one and Mrs. Hamilton for two. Any conversation?
Yes, just want to thank Jennifer Fosnait, a teacher for 35 years, who set to retire in May of next year. So thanks for all of your years of service to our district. It's truly appreciated. As well as to Janet Car- Carmen, who has nine years of service as our lunchroom and playground assistants. So effective for October 30th. So we appreciate all your years of service to the district.
Thank you. Mrs. Rosenaya?
Mrs. Crawford?
Yes.
Mrs. Hamilton?
Yes.
Mrs. Egan?
Yes.
Mrs. Travis?
Yes. That motion carries four oh also. And now item J, and I'll read those again without objection all the way through. Number one, resolve that the Twinsburg Board of Education accepts the donation of the book Small Space Revolution to the Twinsburg High School Library from the Summit County Master Gardeners, Maggie Rivera, 404 Vernon Odom Boulevard in Akron. The book is valued at $21.99. Two, resolve that the Twinsburg Board of Education accepts the donation of $120 from RDP Sports Plus here in Twinsburg to the class of 2025 as per the attached exhibit. Three, resolve that the Twinsburg Board of Education accepts the deletion from inventory of one popcorn machine, tag number 015618. That is no longer repairable. Number four, resolve that the Twinsburg Board of Education accepts the deletion of inventory from the following items from Samuel Bissell Elementary School, and those are listed and, again, unrepairable. Five, resolve that the Twinsburg Board of Education approves the items listed on the attached exhibit to be deleted from inventory. Six, resolve that the Twinsburg Board of Education approves a proposal for an overnight extended student trip for fifth-grade students from George D. Dodge Intermediate School to travel to the Henry Ford Museum and Dearborn Village and the Village in Dearborn, Michigan. One group will travel on May 1 and 2 of 2025, and then one group will travel on May 8 and 9 of 2025. This trip will be paid for in full by the students attending the trip, as sent to the Board under separate cover. Seven, resolve that the Twinsburg Board of Education approves the proposal for an overnight extended student trip for the Twinsburg High School Concert Band to travel to New York City to perform at the Church of St. Paul the Apostle and to participate in a clinic with the conductor from the New York Philharmonic. Students will leave on March 20th of 2025, and they will return on March 23 of 2025. This trip will be paid in full by the students attending with the assistance of the Twinsburg Orchestra Boosters, as sent to the Board under separate cover. Eight, resolve that the Twinsburg Board of Education approves the proposal for an overnight extended trip for the Twinsburg High School Orchestra to travel to New York City. Whoop, I've already read that one. Wait, have I? No, I haven't.
Band and orchestra.
This is the band?
This is the second orchestra. First was band.
First was band, second was orchestra. So there needs to be a correction on number seven because that would be with the assistance of the Twinsburg Band Boosters. And then we would change, Mrs. Rosenaya, the orchestra back down to number eight. Okay, so we'll continue reading number eight now. Resolve that the Twinsburg Board of Education approves and a proposal for an overnight extended student trip for the Twinsburg High School Orchestra to travel to...
It just hasn't.
Okay, Mrs. ...
It hasn't.
Just read it twice?
Yeah.
Okay, okay, that's fine. Okay, that's fine then, okay. Philharmonic Orchestra to travel to New York City to perform at the Church of St. Paul the Apostle and participate in a clinic with the conductor from the New York Philharmonic. Students will leave on March 20th and return on March 23 of 2025. The trip will be paid for in full by the students attending with the assistance of the Twinsburg Band Boosters, as sent to the Board under separate cover.
So point of the record, seven should be the last sentence, the Twinsburg Band Boosters, and eight should be the Twinsburg Orchestra Boosters. My apologies for the error.
No, that's, that's okay. I just was afraid I was reading something wrong. That's okay. Okay, number nine, resolve that the Twinsburg Board of Education approves the private event contract with Hilton Garden Inn of Twinsburg with a class of 2025 prong on Friday, May 2, 2025. This event is fully funded by student participants, as sent to the Board under separate cover. Ten, resolve that the Twinsburg Board of Education, in accordance with Board Policy 9211, acknowledges the following district support organizations: Twinsburg City School District Council, PTA, THS, and RBC Parent Teacher Association, George D. Dodge Intermediate School Parent Teacher Association, Samuel Bissell Elementary School Teacher Parent Teacher Association, Wilcox Primary School Parent Teacher Association, Twinsburg Athletic Boosters, Twinsburg Orchestra Boosters, and Twinsburg Vocal Music Boosters. Eleven, resolve that the Twinsburg Board of Education approves the agreement with LearnWell to provide educational services for one student while hospitalized. The cost is not to exceed $1,000 and is a general fund expense, as sent to the Board under separate cover. Twelve, resolve that the Twinsburg Board of Education approves the memorandum of understanding between the Twinsburg City School District Board of Education and the Twinsburg Education Association to address the stipend and supplemental contracts for the Blue Diamond Advisor and Co-Advisor as per attached exhibit. Thirteen, resolve that the Twinsburg Board of Education approves the agreement for the 24-25 school year with ground-up lawn management of Twinsburg for the needed snow plowing and lot salting of district properties pursuant to the terms and conditions set forth in the contract, as sent to the Board under separate cover, and this is a general fund expenditure. And fourteen, resolve that the Twinsburg Board of Education determines the impracticality of transportation for the school listed below for the 23-24 school year per the Ohio Department of Education in accordance with Ohio Revised Code Section 3327.01. And that list of students is kept on file in our transportation office. The amount of payment is $583.86 per student. This is in addition to the students that were already approved on July 17th, 2024, August 21 of 2024, October 9 of 2024, and October 23 of 2024, as Board of Education meetings. And those are listed below. May I have a motion for items one through fourteen, please?
So moved.
So moved by Mrs. Crawford.
Second.
Second by Mrs. Egan. Any conversation? Hearing none. Mrs. Rosenaya.
Mrs. Crawford?
Yes.
Mrs. Egan?
Yes.
Mrs. Hamilton?
Yes.
Mrs. Travis?
Yes. Motion carries four oh. Number fifteen, resolve that the Twinsburg Board of Education holds this public hearing to give notice of the recommendation for the 2025-2026 Twinsburg City School District Academic Calendar and to provide an opportunity for public comment per the attached exhibit. May I have a motion for number fifteen, please?
So moved.
So moved. We'll give that one to Mrs. Hamilton and a second to Mrs. Crawford. Any conversation? Hearing none. Mrs. Rosenaya.
Mrs. Hamilton?
Yes.
Mrs. Crawford?
Yes.
Mrs. Egan?
Yes.
Mrs. Travis?
Yes, and that carries four oh. Item sixteen, resolve that the Twinsburg Board of Education approves an overnight extended field trip for our Twinsburg High School Boys Soccer Team to travel to the OHSAA State Soccer Championship at the Columbus Crew Stadium, leaving on Saturday, November 9th, and returning on Sunday, November 10th, 2024, pending receipt of the certificate of liability from the Doubletree Columbus Worthington Hotel. This will be a general fund expenditure with meal assistance from the Twinsburg Athletic Boosters, as sent to the Board under separate cover. May I have a motion for item sixteen, please?
So moved.
So moved by Mrs. Egan, second by Mrs. Crawford. Any discussion? Hearing none. Mrs. Rosenaya.
Mrs. Egan?
Yes.
Mrs. Crawford?
Yes.
Mrs. Hamilton?
Yes.
Mrs. Travis?
Yes. And item seventeen. Whereas Mrs. Iwanda Huggins, later hereafter known as Ms. Huggins, was employed in August of 2015 to serve as an administrator in the position of Assistant Principal at George D. Dodge Intermediate School. And whereas Ms. Huggins, one year of limited administrative employment contract expired on July 31 of 2024, and the superintendent recommended that the Twinsburg City School District Board of Education non-renew Ms. Huggins' administrative contract upon its expiration. And whereas on May 15th, the Board accepted the superintendent's recommendation not to reemploy Mrs. Huggins upon the expiration of her administrative contract and expressly acted not to reemploy Ms. Huggins upon the expiration of her administrative contract. And whereas, given that the Board granted Mrs. Huggins continuing contract status in the school district on May 17, 2017, in accordance with Revised Code 3319.11, Ms. Huggins was offered a teaching position within her area of certification and accepted the same effective at the beginning of the 24-25 school year. And whereas Ms. Huggins is currently employed by the Board as a teacher under a continuing contract issued pursuant to Ohio Revised Code Section 3319.08. And whereas Ms. Huggins, as an administrator previously and as a teacher currently, had or has the responsibility to abide by applicable state and federal laws and the responsible and the reasonable and lawful directives of her supervisors. And whereas in the execution of her professional duties, Ms. Huggins was and is expected to comply with all Board policies, including but not limiting to Board Policy 7540.04, Staff Technology, Acceptable Use and Safety; two, Board Policy 8330, Student Records; and three, Board Policy 1200, Administrative Ethics, Administrative Guidelines, and the Licenseur Code of Professional Conduct for Ohio Educators. And whereas, as an Assistant Principal, Ms. Huggins was responsible for collaborating with the principal and assisting with the day-to-day management of Dodge, including monitoring and evaluating classroom instruction, providing feedback to teachers, conducting investigations relating to student conduct, and enforcing the Student Code of Conduct, among other duties. And whereas, Ms. Huggins was trained on how to conduct investigations involving students, including the procedures that should be followed when students and/or others are in possession of inappropriate pictures of students or children. And whereas, while employed in the position of Assistant Principal at Dodge during the 23-24 school year, a student advised Ms. Huggins about an incident involving another student, and Ms. Huggins began investigating the potential student discipline matter. And whereas, in particular, on January 22, 2024, Ms. Huggins used her personal cellphone to take a picture or of a screenshot from a student's phone that showed a student's genitalia. And whereas, that same day, i.e. on January 24th, 2024, Ms. Huggins showed the photo to two staff members at George G. Dodge Intermediate School. And whereas, Ms. Huggins transmitted the photo from her personal email account to her district email account and printed the photo using the school district's equipment that is accessible by others. And whereas, on January 24th, 2024, Superintendent Catherine Powers assigned Ms. Huggins to home pending the outcome of the school district's investigation into this matter. Whereas, an internal investigator was designated to investigate allegations against Ms. Huggins. And whereas, after reviewing potential documents, including Board policies, and interviewing Ms. Huggins and other individuals who were identified as possibly having relevant information, on August 5th of 2024, the external investigator issued a written report summarizing the investigation of Iwanda Huggins, which included findings and recommendations concerning the allegations against Ms. Huggins. And whereas, on August 13th, 2024, the superintendent issued to Ms. Huggins a final decision concerning the investigation, along with a copy of the investigation report, and advised Ms. Huggins that she found that there was sufficient evidence to conclude that Ms. Huggins violated Board policy. In particular, the superintendent determined that based on the totality of the circumstances, the three allegations addressed in the investigation report were substantiated. As such, he adopted such findings and recommendations, including that Ms. Huggins violated the following Board policies: number one, Board Policy 7540.04, Staff Technology, Acceptable Use- Number one, Board Policy seven-five-four-zero-point-zero-four, Staff Technology, Acceptable Use and Safety. Two, Board Policy eight-three-three-zero, Student Records. And three, Board Policy one-two-zero-zero, Administrative Ethics. She also adopted the finding and recommendation of the external investigator as it relates to Miss Huggins' violation of the instruction under the guarantee notice to be honest and forthright as by asserting the alleged deletion of photo on January twenty-two, twenty-twenty-four. Whereas, the superintendent also determined that Miss Huggins engaged in conduct unbecoming the teaching profession by violating Section five, Confidentiality, and Section nine, Appropriate and Responsible Use of Technology of the Licenseur Code of Professional Conduct for an Ohio educator. And whereas, as a result of Miss Huggins' violation of board policy and the Licenseur Code of Professional Conduct for Ohio educators, the superintendent has recommended that the Board of Education initiate proceedings to consider whether Miss Huggins' employment contract should be terminated. And the superintendent has further determined the character of the charges warrants that Miss Huggins be suspended without pay or benefits pending the outcome of termination proceedings. Whereas, the superintendent has provided Mrs. Huggins with a full specification of the grounds for such consideration by providing Miss Huggins and her union representatives with a draft copy of this resolution and the full specifications of the grounds for consideration of terminating the contract of Mrs. Huggins attached hereto during a laudemil pre-determination hearing on November one of twenty-twenty-four. And whereas, Miss Huggins, with the assistance of legal counsel and union representation, has been given a full opportunity to respond to the grounds here specified by rebutting same or otherwise explaining her actions on that same date. And whereas, based upon the investigation of the totality of the alleged misconduct at issue, the board finds that Miss Huggins engaged in the conduct identified within attachment one, attached hereto and incorporated herein by reference. And whereas, the Board of Education has considered the recommendation of the superintendent submitted after the superintendent had a full opportunity to consider all of the facts and circumstances of this matter. Now therefore be it resolved by the Board of Education of the Twinsburg City School District as follows. Number one, the board hereby determines to immediately initiate proceedings for the termination of the continuing employment contract of Iwanda Huggins based on the grounds specified in this resolution and the full specifications of the grounds for consideration of terminating the contract of Iwanda Huggins attached hereto and incorporated fully herein, which constitutes separate, distinct and independently sufficient grounds for termination of employment. Each act is in contravention of Ohio Revised Code three-three-one-nine-point-one-six and standing alone and/or together constitutes good and just cause for contract termination. Two, the character of the conduct described above is such that it warrants the immediate suspension of Miss Huggins' employment contract and therefore Miss Huggins pursuant to Ohio Revised Code three-three-one-nine-point-one-six is suspended without pay or benefits affected twelve oh one AM on November seventh of twenty-twenty-four, pending final action by the Board of Education to consider termination of her employment contract. Three, the board authorizes and directs the treasurer to provide Miss Huggins with a written notice signed by the treasurer of the board's intent to consider the termination of her continuing contract for good and just cause pursuant to Section three-three-one-nine-point-one-six of the Ohio Revised Code. Said written notice shall include this resolution and attach the full specification of grounds for terminating the employment contract of Iwanda Huggins, detailing the grounds upon which consideration of her contract termination shall be based. Four, the board shall proceed with termination at a meeting on November twentieth of twenty-twenty-four unless Miss Huggins files a written demand with the treasurer for a hearing before the board or referee within ten days after receipt of the treasurer's notice, in which case a hearing shall be held pursuant to the provisions of Ohio Revised Code three-three-one-nine-point-one-six and three-three-point, three-three-one-nine-point-one-six-one. Be it for the result that it is hereby found and determined that all formal action of this board concerning and/or relating to the adoption of this resolution was taken in an open meeting of this board and that all deliberations of this board and any of its committees that resulted in such formal action were in meetings open to the public and in compliance with all legal requirements, including Section one-two-one-point-two-two of Ohio Revised Code. May I have a motion for item seventeen, please?
So moved.
So moved by Mrs. Egan?
Second.
Second by Mrs. Hamilton. Any discussion? Hearing none. Mrs. Rosnaya?
Mrs. Egan?
Yes.
Mrs. Hamilton?
Yes.
Mrs. Crawford?
Abstained.
Mrs. Travis?
Yes. Motion carries three oh, three with one abstention and one absence. Hey, at this point, ladies, we are at miscellaneous.
Um, I just wanted to congratulate Marion Richards. She was, um, Mount Dance Educator of the Year, so she does a lot for our school district and she actually will be, um, coming to the conference for student treatment for the minority club that she leads. Um, and I know a lot of people take her classes because she is very engaged and likes to have fun with our students, so I wanted to make sure she got the proper recognition for that. Also, Veterans Day is coming up on November eleventh, so I want to honor and thank all those who have served in the military, um, before, um, previously and who are currently serving right now. Um, so, um, there are a lot of programs happening. I know Wilcox will be having lunch with the veterans, um, and they do a program um, in the morning and then they have, uh, veterans are able to come in. I know, um, RBC is doing a concert. Pretty sure Dodge will be doing, Dodge and Bissell are doing stuff as well, but those are the ones that I know of. So, um, make sure to spread that information and, um, as far as sports, I just want to shout out our district. Um, it's a great time to be in Twinsburg and we should really be proud of what all of our students are doing. Um, we had, I think, was it last week, Sam Hop? Um, he went to, uh, Columbus and he finished thirteenth place at his personal best. Autumn Bassett, she finished fifty-six and reached her personal best. Um, our boys soccer team is in the final four tonight. Our women's soc-, our ladies soccer team, they, uh, had a great run. Our volleyball team had a great run. Um, you think about, um, the cheerleaders just had competition. Um, so it is a great time with our sports. Our baseball team last year, you know, finishing this date. So I think we should be proud of our schools and proud of, um, what our students are doing in the, in the community and I just want to, just wanted to cheer them on at this point. So that is all I had. Also, just wanted to piggyback on the calendar and also my, uh, last vote. The reason why I, just to clarify, I abstain is just because I didn't have enough time to review everything. So that's the only reason why I abstain, just to make that clear for the community. And then as far as the calendar, I did want to recognize with all the work that our DEI is doing, um, I think it's great as a district that we continue to add on more holidays to represent this district um, and make sure that we're celebrating all. So, um, kudos to, um, superintendent. She was able to, um, she got information from students and right away she came to the board saying, let's get this added. Um, so I thought that was great, um, for her to be able to do that and for us to already have it um, for the calendar for twenty-twenty-five. So we keep hearing our, hearing from our students, hearing from our parents and I'm just happy to be in a district, in a community who will be able to hear our, hear what our parents say and honor that.
Yes, good luck to our boys.
Good luck to the boys tonight.
Good luck to the boys tonight.
Go Tigers!
Okay, at this time, Mrs. Rosnaya, it is four thirty-nine.
Sure.
Uh, there was no executive session, so we will close our meeting. May I have a motion to clo-, I'll make the motion to close at four thirty-nine. Any a second, please?
Second.
Second, Mrs. Egan. Mrs. Rosnaya, roll.
Mrs. Travis?
Yes.
Mrs. Egan?
Yes.
Mrs. Hamilton?
Yes.
Mrs. Crawford?
Yes.
Okay, four oh. So thank you very much and for those watching, thank you for sticking with us. Have a good rest of your evening and again, go Tigers tonight. Thank you all.